This is the second workshop in the EARs. We've got three today to go over. And first item on the agenda, though, as always, the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic which stands one nation unencumbered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're hoping for better results today than yesterday in the stock market.
Yeah.
So, I've been afraid to look. It's where we are today. We hadn't gotten started good.
It's not open yet.
No, I was looking at the world markets. This is how broad this group looks. People don't know how broad we look up here, but we look worldwide, globally, right? Okay, word, John. Okay. First EAR is Coastal Management Element. Is this Smiley, Mr. DuBois?
Well, first of all, I'm Bob Keating. I'm County Community Development Director. Let me just begin real briefly. As Chairman Hamner said, this is an evaluation appraisal report workshop that we've got today. We do have three elements, and these are the final three elements. After you look at these, you will have looked at all 15 elements and sub-elements. That's the good news. The bad news is, at your next meeting, we're going to be coming with the entire year document.
You're going to look at them again.
You'll look at everything on your meeting of October 9th. So, don't be too shocked when you get a real thick report in your packet on Friday.
I'm excited. I haven't slept that well since I gave up Plato's Republic at night, you know? So, this will be great. I'll get two or three days' sleep.
We help insomnia as best we can. But I can tell you, when we send us out, we're also going to have several other tables that you can look at. We've got all the comments that we have received through the process, and we'll show you how that we've addressed those. We've addressed all the bucket issues that we promised to address at that workshop that the P&amp;Z had, and those are in the table. We'll show you how we address those. And we're also going to show you how we address all state ear requirements. But with that, I'll turn it over to Roland to go over the coastal management here.
All right, Roland, let's talk water some more.
Thanks. I do have a presentation here. This is the coastal management element of the comprehensive plan. Let me say that this applies to what we've defined in our comprehensive plan as the coastal zone, which is essentially based on the Indian River Lagoon watershed. And there's a graphic that you see which kind of shows it's essentially half the county, includes the Felsner area. So, everything that we're dealing with in this element is focused on this section. The coastal management element is kind of a catch-all of issues in the coastal zone. There's a lot of overlap with the other elements because all the various elements have topics and issues that relate to the coastal zone, which is essentially the more developed section of the county. So, you'll see overlap in some of the policies and objectives. Some focus, however, particular topics are more geared towards the coastal management element more than other elements. For example, coastal marine resource protection, manatee protection in particular, marina sighting and boating safety. The state requires 13 key counties in Florida to adopt manatee protection plans and also to incorporate those into the comprehensive plan, which I'll get into. But essentially, this element incorporates all the manatee protection plan objectives and policies. Our public access to coastal resources. Another aspect that's more focused on this element is coastal high-hazard areas, natural disaster planning and recovery, and limiting the densities in the coastal, what's called the coastal high-hazard area. And as I mentioned, natural disaster planning. A few issues, just the comparisons between the last major plan update and present. Estrean water quality, which relates to coastal resources. Again, some of this was covered in the conservation element, but water quality overall's been fairly consistent. Class II and class III waters, there's fluctuations at various locations and based on various events such as droughts and tropical storms, it affects water quality, but overall, it's been consistent. Seagrasses on the overall lagoon have actually increased over the past 10 years or so. In Indian River County, there's actually been some slight increases, but not so much in the developed areas. There have been a number of water quality improvement projects that have benefited the lagoon, even though we might not see the results currently, but we expect that they will help. Here's a few of the ones that have occurred over the years which are going to improve water quality. The Sebastian Stormwater Park, the muck removal project, main relief canal, pollution control facility, some of the water projects, also some sub-regional stormwater treatment facilities in Roseland, Gifford, and Vera Lake Estates. Over the past 10 years or so, the county's acquired approximately 900 acres in the Indian River Lagoon Blue Way for conservation. We've adopted habitat conservation plans for the scrub jay in the Sebastian area, a sea turtle conservation plan, and also adopted the manatee protection plan, so there's been progress there. We've also implemented the beach preservation plan that the county adopted in the late 1990s with focus on beach re-nourishment of areas of critical erosion, and that ties also into the sea turtle HCP. Finally, there's been a limiting of development densities within the coastal high-hazard areas. Speaking of the coastal high-hazard area, again, this was somewhat talked about in the land use element, but for Florida statutes, there's been a recent change in the definitions. You can see on the left, this is how the old or current boundary was determined, based on hurricane evacuation for category 1. Now, it's based on storm surge to the right. It actually has lessened or decreased the area of application where some portions of the barrier island would now, under the new definition, not be included in the coastal high-hazard area.
It's like we decreased part of the coastline, but we increased, like Sebastian River.
Right. You can see on this graphic where it does the good point on the Sebastian River. In the overall coastal management element, there were 14 objectives. 12 of those were achieved, 2 not achieved, which I'll describe. There is 100 policies, 93 implemented and 7 not implemented. Here's a brief summary of the 14 objections. Here's the first 7. I'm going to touch upon the beaches and dunes in particular later on. Do want to point out that four of these 14 objectives relate directly to the manatee protection plan and implementation of those objectives. The manatee protection plan, again, it was, since it is an important part of this, I just briefly covered it. It was originally adopted in 2000, revised in 2004. It does contain various information. Here's some general seagrass density maps for the county, which is one of the things it looks at for location and arena sighting. This next graphic here is a very generalized depiction of where manatees are abundance, where they generally accumulate. Looking at these factors and others, the county's adopted, and it's again adopted through the, into the comprehensive plan, are marina sighting zones. We have eight zones within the lagoon and one for the Sebastian River. And each zone has different standards or requirements depending on site characteristics if it's for marina and boat ramp sighting.
Excuse me, Roland. Is there any, can we go into the Internet and get access to these maps so we can print them in color? The black and white is, just doesn't show up this. Do you have them on the Internet?
Yes, I think these will be posted on the Internet on the ear site. We also have the manatee plan online. I can get you that information.
Okay. So, we'll be able to get the, all right, thank you.
Just to focus on a couple of in particular objectives, on beaches and dunes. The objective was by 1998, all natural functions of beach and dune systems be protected, including mitigation of any human-related disturbances. Essentially, status finding was that this objective was achieved mostly through the implementation of the beach preservation plan and sea turtle habitat conservation plan. There are some issues, though, as continuation on erosion. Again, some of these are repetitive from other elements, but they apply here. We're looking at revising one of the policies to reevaluate and consider looking at the coastal line of construction and moving that westward based on expected increased erosion over the years, what we call the dune stabilization setback line. We're also looking at a new policy that would support and provide the support for a plan by the state to develop a statewide habitat conservation plan for Florida beaches. The DEP, Department of Environmental Protection and Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission are working with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service to develop a plan so that when there is, are storm events or other activities Florida-wide, there'd be an opportunity to coordinate on a consistent basis restoration of beaches with consideration of listed species. So, we're referencing that. And also, we're recommending a new policy that relates to requiring oceanfront development to hook up the public sewer when it's available.
I thought that was already required.
Yeah.
Have we got areas that have been exempt or something?
Well, there's some areas, for example, where there's pre-existing subdivisions, but water lines come in on A1A. They're not hooked up.
Oh, they aren't hooked up.
They're not necessarily required to hook up at this time, but we're looking at requiring.
Right, okay.
Oh, so this isn't just new development, this is...
Well, some of the old development didn't purchase the meters and didn't pay the fees, and so they were bypassed, and so I'd forgotten about that. So, this would allow them into the system then?
Our intent is to require them to be put into the system because the main concern is onsite dysseptic systems, particularly on oceanfront lots. When you have erosion events, you expose the system to the beach. It's not only a health issue, it's an environmental issue.
That's dogs walking on the beach look pretty good, doesn't it?
The other objective I want to focus on is objective 8, public access. We have a, the objective is to increase by five public access points since the last major update by 2010. Measure would be number of access points. Our conclusion is we did achieve this. There are a number of access improvements that have occurred over the past few years. I'll list a few here. The canoe launch park at south end of Sebastian River near 512, Captain Forrest Hammock Preserve. County assisted the Fish and Wildlife Service on opening up public access improvements to the Pelican Island Refuge, Round Island Park South, North Sebastian Conservation Area. Also during this time, the St. Sebastian River Preserve State Park opened up for public access. So, there has been, if you think about it, quite a bit of access improvements over the years. Now, there's still an opportunity for more, however, and what we're proposing to do is revise this objective to set a new target date for additional public access improvements. We have a number of conservation properties we have acquired that have not been open for access, and there's opportunity to meet that objective through improvements to those purchases. Other objective policies we're proposing is a revision to a policy to, for the county to seek funds to build a boat ramp at Gifford Dock Road. Also to set a target date for limited beach access construction at the Captain Forrest Hammock Preserve. Right now, we have access on Jungle Trail, but we don't have it on the oceanfront. It's always been envisioned through an approved plan that there'd be some limited access to the beach. And finally, there's a new program at the state level called the State Mayfield Working Waterfronts Program, and it's a brand-new start funding in 2009, and it seems to fit pretty consistently with our needs for the Archie Smith Fish House as far as restoration and improvement to make it, restore it as a demonstration waterfront, working waterfront. Finally, just got some miscellaneous policies. Again, some of these overlap what we've seen in some of the other elements, but they're appropriate in this element as well. Obtaining site certifications for go-for-tarsh relocations, multiple various methods for natural system protection, water quality monitoring, which we covered in the conservation element, support of the Indian River Lagoon Comprehensive Everglades Restoration Plan and assistance with FEMA on some flood map optimization that they're in the process of. And that's essentially it.
Is the FEMA, are those flood maps, is there going to be a dramatic change in any of our flood zones, flood areas, do you think?
We are, I don't think Michael O'Brien's here. We are working with FEMA, FEMA, and we're using a new technology, LiDAR technology, and we're going, we're going to be getting a lot better data on elevations. I don't think there're going to be significant changes to the flood map. Is that your understanding, Roland?
I think the main thing is to make it actually more usable in the format. So, right now, it's the very generalized boundaries for the flood zones, and this will be...
Right, I mean, just from a building standpoint, it's the cut and fill that, the height that you have to come up and go down to offset it. But, I mean, there are areas in the flood zones that seem to be okay without being, and I just wondered if there were going to be some adjustments, if that was going to be changed.
The hope is it'll be more accurate and adjust as it's supposed to be.
When do you expect that to be completed? Do you have any idea?
Ultimately, in 2010. They're in the midst right now. I think drafts of the maps are supposed to be available by the end of 2009. We're, one of the things that we're proposing under this policy is to do some public information workshops as we get closer to the...
Not before your next insurance premium, if that's what you're worried about.
I don't have insurance.
So, these new things are going to be coming up next year. They're just listed as going to be new, but you're not going to put the new things in on this plan until next year.
That's correct. This year, we do the evaluation of the plan, and based on the evaluation, next year, we'll go change the plan. So, we will put these new policies, we'll put these new policies in place, adopt amendments to the comp plan next year around this time.
Okay. Any questions or staff? Anyone, so it's a public workshop. Anyone care to comment on the coastal management plan? Yes, ma'am, come on up. Just give us your name and address and your thoughts.
My name's Billy Wagner, 2225 20th Avenue, Vera Beach. The packet I downloaded from the Internet wasn't exactly what was up on the screen, so I'm referencing packet pages.
That's fine. We have the packet up here. We hope we have your packet. There has been some...
Okay.
The same packet we have.
So, I'm hoping that we'll have more public input before this is finalized.
We do.
And I did hear they are planning on having some fairly more modern-looking maps because the maps in the packet are like kindergarten maps. This is unbelievable.
They do that to test our patience.
Yeah.
It's just, it's part of the job.
Okay, because there's a lot of new technology out there. Well, I'll just go down a list of quick things. I don't know if you covered them, but that's what was in the packet I downloaded last night off the government website.
This is on just coastal management?
Yeah, this is the coastal element.
Okay, fine.
Did you discuss about requiring the removal of citrus? Requiring the removal of abandoned citrus?
In the conservation element.
That's, that was in conservation element, not in the coast. There's an overlap. Is it mentioned in the coastal element?
I think it might be also referenced.
It's mentioned in the coastal element because I just did this last night. I don't know if the citrus growers have said that's absolutely necessary to protect the working groves, but...
We have.
It's a critical habitat for wintering birds, and I went over this with Paul Chitek at Pelican Island. I said, "Don't take..." Not only is some of that citrus historic, some of the first citrus groves in the county on the barrier island that he took out, I said, "Just the fact that you're neglecting them doesn't mean it's right to yank them out either."
Well, the problem is, is that they harbor canker and greening, it's diseases. And what the alternative you have, we, as citrus growers, we're recommending and asking that people do one of two things, is that they push the trees completely, which is not in Audubon. Jen Stripson was here on the conservation plan. He mentioned about the birds. We also would accept the defoliation of the trees, but we, unfortunately, we necessarily have to kill the tree because the bacteria lives in those trees, and it will spread from the trees. And that's, you know, that's one of the trade-offs, and I, as several people, you may not agree with that, but that's, I mean, that's the purpose, and the purpose is not to take away anything from wildlife whatsoever, but it is to try and get rid of any stray trees that are harboring disease that'll continue to spread for us, so.
Well, couldn't they, the landowners, be required to just manage them as groves?
No, ma'am.
They can't do that?
I mean, if it's, you know, if they may just say, "We're banned," they can't, they can't pay for it, so they just stop, and some of the trees grow wild. And that's the problem. You can't make someone manage something, no. I mean, that's the problem with, people want agriculture to continue, but you cannot mandate agriculture if it's not profitable. People can't go for so long, I guess.
Okay, well...
I understand.
There's got to be another way around that. I was thinking I'd be creative enough.
Mega note, there might be another way.
There are people that contract to manage groves, and it's a responsibility of the landowner to manage their land, and you can't just say, "Well..." You can force them to bulldoze it, but you can't force them to take care of it. That doesn't make any sense. How can you force them to bulldoze it?
Well, actually, that's the problem. We cannot force them to do either. We're trying to incentivize them to do something.
Or you could force them to manage it as a citrus grove.
Excuse me, is it just citrus trees that you're looking at, or can they be replaced with something else?
Well, it just seems I've done years and years and years and years and years of bird surveys mainly on the barrier island because that's a migrant trap that's a required stopping place for all the birds flying from the Arctic to South America.
But is it just citrus trees that you need to give these birds a play?
There's certain birds just seem to like the citrus and the abandoned citrus. They don't care. They just, they just, there must be bugs or something that they like on them. Well, the buntings eat seeds in the weeds that grow between the citrus rows, but they hide in the citrus. So, anyway, let's go beyond that. So, I just wanted to take that into consideration. The other thing is on page, that was on page 22, on page 24, Atlantic Coastal Sand Ridge. I'm still pushing to purchase that Winter Beach scrub that Lost Tree Preserve got their zoning fixed a year or so ago to make it worth three times more of what it was worth until they got the zoning changed, and now they're just sitting on it because nobody's building. So, unfortunately, now the price is probably, is probably worth more, but then again, maybe they're willing to dump it. That's a 200-acre, that's the nicest scrub in the whole county. It's better than the scrub up in Sebastian. So, that's a very important piece of scrub. It should be at the top of the purchase list, but I know there has to be a willing seller, but this is the time, this is the time. There should be willing sellers. They paid nothing for that like 30 years ago. The other thing, the scrub jays on page 25 and 26, Habitat Conservation Plan. You mentioned Vera Lake Estates in that, but again, the Winter Beach scrub is much better scrub than Vera Lake Estates. There are scrub jays on that Winter Beach scrub. They're paying mitigation to kill them all, but I heard that the mitigation bank is closed, so I don't exactly know what Fish and Wildlife Service did with the money. It might be being held in escrow. We need to preserve the scrub jays in our county, not spending money outside the county to buy a scrub jay habitat. We lose the jays, we lose the money, we lose the habitat, we lose all the way across the board. The money could stay here and go to purchase. This DSL line and CCL line, I don't know which page that's on. The Line of Prohibition, Eastern Roads Building Setback Line. Well, that line, you're supposed to not be able to build beyond it unless it's a renovation or 50% rebuild, but in the city of Vera Beach, they built that Ocean Park, whatever, that Flamevine thing. That's right on top of Cresties. It's so far east of the new CCL line, it's ridiculous. So, in that line, you need to put, you may be banning construction beyond that, but there is a loophole, and the loophole is the engineer has to prove a 30-year erosion probability. So, all they do is get an engineer to do a few studies and say, "Oh, 30 years, that's not going to erode." So, you need to put that in there, that there are loopholes, and you can build beyond the coastal construction line because they do.
I think that, I think, and this gets confused a lot, but let me ask staff, because I, I think that we confuse, there are two, there are two lines. One is the line that you can build, you can build in front of if you meet higher engineering specs. Then there's, is it the high-water mark that you cannot build beyond, period? And I think that's the line they're talking about, actually pushing further westward. Is that correct?
Right. There's the 81 line and the 87 line. We adopt the 81 line as a line of prohibition. Our rules don't have any effect in the city of Vera Beach.
Right, but is the 87 line further east or further west than the 87?
Further west, further west, and that's a line of regulation, not a line of prohibition. You can build seaward of the coastal construction control line as long as you meet the criteria, and that's where the 30-year erosion line is looked at, too. So, your, DEP's going to look at what the 30-year erosion, where that will be, and that will determine where seaward or the CCCL.
Once we cross that line, we have building criteria, but it's, part of that leaves our hands and goes to state functions.
Correct.
Department of Environmental Protections and one. Is that what you're talking?
Yeah, but the developer just goes to Tallahassee with an attorney and strong-armed DEP and to give them an apartment. That's what happened there. Here's the 87, here's the ocean, here's the 87 line, here's the 81 line.
Right.
Here's where Cresties is, and that's what happened because I went and talked to the engineer.
I understand, but we don't have any, we, without looking at it, we don't have anything to do with the city.
Right.
But I think if you look at the...
But is the county going to allow the engineers to go to Tallahassee and pull a DE permit east of, not only east of the 87 line, east of the 81 line?
We don't allow, I don't believe, since I've been here for the last, God knows how long, but is that we have ever allowed anything past the 81 line. That's why, we, people get confused. The 87 line, the coastal construction line, we have several projects, and we'll probably continue to have some that are built, but they have like pilings that have to drive down, they have to have breakaway first floors. They accept a certain risk by being there, but they are allowed out there.
Yeah, and it leads to armoring because, "Oh, there goes my foundation," and...
Right, but that's what, part of that becomes Tallahassee, and I'm not sure that we have the ability here, I can ask our attorney, to stop that in this county completely.
I'm not completely sure whether we're completely preempted or not. That's something I can look up, though.
Right.
The thing is, you have to support Tallahassee.
Right.
You have to support them. They, they cave in every time because they don't have the backing of the municipalities. That's the trouble. Okay. On page 65, objective 14, when you came up with your manatee numbers, you decided to exclude the bad year, the year where the most died. That's ridiculous. Why don't you exclude the good years and just take the bad year? That's like saying three people died in Iraq yesterday, you know, and just taking the one day, that was a good day. I mean, well, how could you just knock out the number, the highest mortality year? That's the craziest statistics I ever saw.
What would it have meant? What difference would it mean?
Let me just say, the conclusion was the objective was not achieved. So, that was just a statement that that particular year was abnormally high compared to all the other years around it, and I don't know if it was a red tide year, what the issues were. He was just making that statement. In the end, the conclusion was the same.
I just take that right out of there. That's ridiculous.
No, I think it's appropriate to say, but it does, the end is that the objective was not achieved.
The other thing is, manatees get hit in other counties and make it over the line and die here. Manatees get hit here and make it over the line into Brevard and St. Lucie County, and so those don't count. And, you know, a lot of them are hit and you can't determine because it's a, it's a, it's damage to the interior. There are no prop wounds, so we can't determine the cause of death.
We have, as I remember, there's a couple of issues with manatees, though. What this objective is talking about is what we, the county, I believe, can do to help protect them. It's like in the power plants, blocking off canals, and certain things that we can do to help achieve and improve mortality. Is that correct?
Right.
But Fish and Game has their own rules when it comes to the...
Improve non-mortality.
I mean, but Fish, but this is where people, and it's not, I'm not saying that you're wrong, I think you're right, but this is where Fish and Game comes in, in a different area, which is like the speed zones and the other, we don't control all the rules, we only control the stuff.
But you can't fudge the numbers in order to meet an objective with the death of animals.
Which we did, we did not.
You couldn't do that with people. You can't do it with animals.
Well, I think, for better or worse, I think that the, we, I hear what you're saying, and I think that they do, too, but the reality is, is that they've admitted their objective was not achieved.
Right.
Now, if they had higher, if there was a higher rate and it... and it, it might be easier for them to achieve a better number if it was higher, like you say, so I'd rather keep the pressure on them and make it, they've gotta make it look better with a lower number, myself, but that's, you know, it's, it's, it works either way, but the idea is not to kill manatees around here, if we can.
Could you say, Roland, that the manatee protection plan is not good enough, needs to be, you're gonna be looking at it next year, anyway, but-
Right, and these are statistics that will be looked at. The manatee plan itself undergoes its own EAR every five years, that comes up in two thousand nine, and both the state and the county will be looking at the effectiveness or lack thereof of the plan, so there'll be an opportunity, and the state will clearly look at these numbers, as will the county. And again, objectives are, need to be measurable, we came up with a measurement, it didn't meet that measurement, so it does say that, yes, there is a concern, and that's why we have these regulations and why we evaluate that plan every five years, and that's-
I think what's more important is what they're trying to accomplish down below, what they're, what we can do as a county, so it's duly noted.
Okay. Now, page sixty-eight, beach access facilities at Captain Forster's, I'm completely a hundred percent for beach access. What I'm not for is parking lots on east of US, east of A-1A. There are, you know, people can park on Jungle Trail and walk that beautiful path up to Captain Forster's, cross A-1A, and go to the beach, and have a completely natural experience, but there's not much room there to squeeze a parking lot in. I just think that's ridic, it's bad enough, what, have you seen Golden Shores lately? It's just a bulldoze disaster area, because we gave it, we gave the best part to Windsor, so, and then for a million dollars to bulldoze the rest of that. That coastal hammock is so important to wildlife, I see otters cross A-1A. All right, page seventy, using nineteen ninety baseline data. This happens all the time, people move the baseline up to modern times, so it looks like we're not losing anything, or that it's not a, quote, significant reduction. You've gotta go back, we have data for this county from before nineteen ninety, and this is a big problem in biology, when people wanna make their numbers look better by comparing the, the, you know, the latest studies with studies that weren't that long ago, when we've already lost half of everything.
But let me just say, this is the existing plan that was done in nineteen ninety-eight, yeah. So page, page seventy is not part of the evaluation appraisal report, it's part of the appendix showing what we have right now, and that was done in nineteen ninety-eight, when nineteen ninety data were about the best we had.
Can we go back a little further, when we're using baseline data?
Let's see what we use this time.
The concept was, use the baseline as when we first adopted our modern comprehensive plan.
Well, that was probably a mistake.
The whole point is to evaluate whether the comprehensive plan was effective or not, so you used the starting point of the comp plan as the baseline, that was the intent here. And since we're looking at now a, essentially ten-year evaluation of the nineteen ninety-eight plan, then the concept here should be, you know, it could be based on the nineteen ninety-eight to show progress since then. At this point, we're recommending that you keep the nineteen ninety, so you have an ongoing evaluation of the effectiveness.
And that's what I was looking, I thought that we were holding the, you were holding the nineteen ninety data into the current plan, which is basically what you're saying, except that originally, they didn't go to nineteen eighty, they went to nineteen ninety. Now, they're not moving up ten years and reevaluating, they're staying on what they had, 'cause it was really the last overall big study we did, wasn't it, in the area?
Right, and again, we're not proposing to change the nineteen ninety baseline.
Right.
Again, it's just a matter of looking at the data to see if we're being successful in limiting reductions.
Okay.
Okay. Well, I don't know if they can go back, but really, people have been inhabiting Florida for eight thou, probably in this county for eight thousand years, so if you went, no significant reductions, it would go like this, and then it would go at the end. So, page eighty-nine, so you think that's an appendix? It was kinda handwritten, eighty-nine. Public, renewed, beaches renewed with public funds are not required to provide public access if adversely impacting existing residential neighborhoods, so we all know what that means, that means nobody wants the public walking by their house, so that all new public access is gonna have to be wholly surrounded by public land, and we're not, know if we're planning on buying any more expensive beachfront property, so that means there aren't gonna be any new public accesses all along A-1A. I mean, we all know-
Is this in the old, is this, we're into the old, this is from about page seventy on, I think this is, that's the old plan.
So what's the new plan, is it still gonna be a big loophole? Public access? If one homeowner says, no?
Page fifty-five is where we discuss those policies, it starts there.
Which, which policy is she, I think it's eight point five.
Where is the objective about beach access with?
Oceans, are we talking, um, policy eight point five of the existing plan, to Round Island Beach Park? Yeah, that, those access improvements were completed.
I see that, I'm trying, I think what, I think what her premise is here is, how do we gain more, how do you gain more public access if homeowners don't want you traipsing by their houses, and I think that it has to do with land acquisition and areas of acquisition, is that what you're asking?
It's, it's beaches we paid to nourish, and yet we can't go to.
Okay.
On page eighty-nine, which policy are you specifically referring to?
I don't have it in front of me.
I think it's eight point four that starts on page eighty-eight.
It might be.
We're essentially proposing-
Something about public beaches nourished.
It's, county shall prohibit net loss of public access and facilities, is that it?
Yeah.
It just says, you're not, it's, it's a loophole.
Requiring any device removed public to be replaced, and then requiring private property owners to provide public access to beaches which are renourished or enhanced?
Right, and then it says, unless they object.
Okay. Mr. Davis.
Jim Davis, Public Works Director. The county recognizes that east of A-1A, there's very little land to purchase, and there is no plan in, that I know of, to purchase land, however, the county has been purchasing land west of A-1A. We recently purchased part of the Disney track, and that is proposed for beach parking, people will have to walk across A-1A to get to Wabaso Beach Park and, and some of those areas where beach nourishment is planned to occur. The next large project will be Sector Three in that Wabaso area. And fortunately, for most of what we've nourished, particularly Sectors One and Two up near Sebastian Inlet, the state owned, you know, much of that frontage, and we captured state monies for that nourishment. There's very little access, of course, in the South County, but that was nourished with hurricane recovery money.
But with regard to what she has said, just for specifics, Bob, if, if in fact, the new policy's eight point four prohibit the net loss of public access facilities, and we go through the action accomplishment, did this policy meet yes, and then yes, but we're gonna maintain the policy?
Right.
We're not, wouldn't we maintain the balance of what's written in the old policy, as well as, this is a summary, so the old policy with the same objective about having that land there from private properties would be maintained. What Jim's talking about is how difficult it is to find that land to even get it done, but they're gonna maintain the objective, which means I suppose you're gonna keep trying if it's possible, is that correct?
I think as opportunities present themselves with willing property owners, and as beach parking and ocean access, you know, gets, you know, more prominent, more demand for that, we will probably look for-
But I, I think you're right, I, you know, in all candor, I think you're correct, that it's very difficult to find a homeowner that's just loves to have a beach access right next to their house and, and whatnot, unless they've got a concession stand in their backyard.
Okay, so it wasn't built in to guarantee public access when public funds were used to nourish the beach? It was just, hopefully someday, maybe?
I'm afraid that's, I'm afraid you've interpreted that probably correctly.
Okay.
Can I ask a question, George?
Sure.
Jim, this is going way back, but there used to be some kind of state requirement that if there had been a historic access to the beach-
They had to maintain it.
Yeah, it had to be maintained, have all of those, has all of that happened and over with? And that, this going all the way back to Herb Kale was the person that was involved in binding all of those areas and, and causing them to be made available to the public for access regardless of the ownership of the, at the time.
Well, if there have been historic accesses, I don't know any that have been closed.
Isn't the South Beach access like that? Where you go in, right between those two developments and the-
Well, sometimes there's, there's easements between lots, and some of those are really not dedicated to the public in general, they may be dedicated to the homeowners within that development, or privately dedicated somehow, but all the accesses that I know of that have been historic have, are, are still open today, I don't know any that we've closed. Since the eighty-one, we began opening, you know, Turtle Trail, Seagrape Trail, and of course, we purchased all the oceanfront with the bond issues back in the eighties, but I don't know of anything we've closed. We still have much capacity at Treasure Shores Park for parking, and we did try to blend that into the vegetation and not clear cut it.
Much better park.
Okay.
But actually, yeah, not that many people live north of the Wabaso Causeway, so that's why those beaches aren't utilized very much, I think where we need more beach access is south of there. That Disney property, are you planning on bulldozing that beautiful hammock to put in a parking lot?
Well, we, we do not have a master plan, but it was purchased, because it needed to be cleaned up, there was an arsenic dip there for cattle. In addition, we, we saw the need for parking, but we hope to blend that into the vegetation, but right now, we do not have a site plan that's been developed.
Okay.
How many acres did you buy there, Jim? You didn't buy all of it, right?
It was a good-sized piece, a couple acres, I believe, I mean, it's enough that we could get forty, fifty parking spaces if we wanted, if we blended it in, probably maybe twenty, thirty.
Right, this is right on five-ten?
It's right on five-ten, yeah.
But, but that's, that's an out parcel to the overall parcel there, the overall parcel is proposed by, for development.
Right, that's what I mean.
Right. There's six or eight acres over there, I think.
And it's got it into five-ten right away, so.
It's on the east, west side.
It's that beautiful wall of green, is what it is, on the south side.
Thank you all, but that, that's nice conversation, but what other, what other objectives would you like to talk about?
Oh, the other thing, only other thing I meant to add was, some, in the whole document, there's cross-referencing, so when, when you were talking about the Atlantic Coastal Sand Ridge and the Winter Beach scrub on page twenty-four, it needs to be cross-referenced when we get around to the Aquifer, 'cause you could do both. You could say Aquifer recharge.
Oh, you mean that-
Scrub habitat.
It could be used for Aquifer recharge as well.
Yeah, so I'd add cross-reference in there to that one, all right, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Anybody else?
I have a question on something she brought up, may I?
I'm sure.
And actually, this is for Dr. Baker, Dr. Baker, would you go to page twenty-three? And she brought up, I'm sorry, I did not get your name.
Billy Wagner.
Okay, Billy. Billy brought up the fact that the Lost Tree Island Conservation Area should maybe be moved further up in this line, and aren't you, you're on the land acquisition committee, are you not?
Right.
What is the-
Chairman.
Okay.
By the way.
What is the, what is your feeling about that, moving that up?
Look, if you could, the program is based on a willing seller, and-
That's right.
And that influences a lot of what, what we purchase, so, also, the problem is, and we really could discuss it, is that there's no money available at the moment.
Which is more important right now.
But, that's true, those, that area really needs to be protected, and for a lot of different reasons.
It's the highest point in the county.
It was, it actually was on our list, I believe, earlier on, and then Lost Tree wanted to do the exchange, and it was exchanged, unfortunately, and a number of us didn't like, like to have that happen, but it did, and that is part of the problem.
Is this list here, in, in, a list in priorities?
No, let me just say, what you're looking at on page twenty-three, is that what you're looking at?
Twenty-three, yes.
That's just a summary of acquisitions that have occurred within the Blue Way.
These have all occurred.
No particular order, those, the Lost Tree Islands is distinct from the Lost Tree Preserve, Winter Beach scrub, which is what-
Yeah, the Winter Beach scrub is another Lost Tree property.
Then what page are you referring to?
That was on page, on page twenty-four, there's some bullet points, and one of the bullet points is Atlantic Coastal Sand Ridge.
Yeah, what that does is identify some particular corridors that should be focused on for protection.
So it would fulfill a lot of different objectives, purchasing.
And as you can, we actually reference the Winter Beach area, which essentially is talking about the, what we call the Winter Beach scrub. We're actually looking at the scrub project to the south of this property, which was approved as high point.
I mean, in, in essence, what you're asking for there, in the current plan, they're, they're backing you up, they've listed it as a poss, as being in a, in a corridor, which makes it highly visible, but it's, it'll be up to the land acquisition group to prioritize this, when, and if and ever they get money again.
All right, I just wanna keep it in the public mind, before the housing turns around.
Okay. Thank you, Billy.
That does bring up the question of, of the management plans for the areas that we've already purchased, and you indicated that-
I wonder when that was gonna come up, I didn't know if this was the right time or not.
Well, you indicated that you'd like to see a plan, I, I think we should have a table listing the management plans for the different properties, and, and have some go, I mean, they were, some of these are supposed to be done by now and haven't really even started.
I, I know you asked about that at the last meeting, and I, I did not call, I was gonna talk to Bob about it myself, I'm, I'm not sure, within the elements, would that be in the conservation element, that it should be targeted, and I think we indicated you all were going to list out something and add it, we'll see it when we get the big book, okay, I would, I would hope that maybe, Richard, you might wanna go scan it with them before they get to publication or get it done, but that's, it comes in the conservation plan, is where we'll see the plans, and I think that if, if there's something of, either short or not, that that may be an area that is looked at separately, or, you know, hard-
I'll just tell you right now, we're gonna address it in the conservation element, the basic, that we're gonna implement these management plans, if Dr. Baker's looking for a management plan by management plan summary, that wasn't what we were anticipating at this point in time.
I, I think the dilemma, and this is just as an aside here, to, to tend to agree with him about one thing, is that we have a lot of, you know, this county has a lot of conservation land, and we have people that still want more, and I just have always worried, we're, I like conservation land, and being in agriculture, believe it or not, we do believe in that, but the reality is, is that once you, once land transfers from pub, from private to public ownership, unless there's a substantial amount of funding, plans, budgeting, personnel, you never, the, the plans never, you don't get the same management of land that you do with private property people, now, you, you may not believe that, but you don't, and that's one of the reasons these conservation easements at Sexton's, or the stuff out at the ranch out on seventy and sixty, may not be open to the public, but the reality is, they'll probably stay more natural, the way you see it when we bought it, because they're gonna fund it and do what's necessary, and we want that in all of our land, but it takes time and money and people to do that, and, you know, we're in tight budgets, and I'm, you know, in all candor, I'm not sure that's that high on the county's, we, we talk the talk, but I'm not sure we walk the walk yet, and, so we do the best we can when you put it in our objective, and that's, you know, all, I'll get off the soapbox today.
Well, I, I think it's gotta be listed as a very high priority, and I don't see it happening.
We, we have so many high priorities around here for money, all we need is a print and press, we had a print and press, we'd be in good shape.
We spent seventy-some million dollars of county funds to buy this thing, land, you know, so I think a certain percentage of it ought to go to managing it. And, and you're talking about the ramps in the coastal areas, I think we need to put in porta-pots in some of these areas, and have a system, you're really not mentioning any of that, garbage cans, raccoon, garbage cans and collected, I mean, this is not- Garbage cans, raccoon, garbage cans and collected, I mean, this is not, these are not very expensive items. You can get a porta-pot for a hundred dollars a month or something like that.
I agree, and I don't really want to cut you off or stop the discussion, but the reality is, is that's, it's got to go in the conservation plan. And I'm not, this group of people that he says will volunteer, I'm hoping when we see the element come back, you'll have addressed some of this. Because I think, you know, he, Richard's had some pretty good points about simple stuff that we could do now. You know, personnel to pick up the trash, I mean, it's, but at some point, I hope this other plan will at least have some notes to that effect, okay?
Well, just, and the garbage cans, if I could go back to that, the collection is done in the morning.
Yep.
After a whole day, a whole day of garbage going into the can, raccoons come in in the evening, and then in the morning, they come and pick it up.
Nothing left, it's all over the ground.
It's all over the ground. I mean, it's just, just scheduling problems like that that we need to address, I think, for some of these areas. This doesn't cost anymore, it's just changing the schedule when people empty these cans. So, that should be done at the end of the day, when people are putting stuff in there instead of the beginning of the day, when there was nothing in there, except it's all laying out on the ground. I'm just talking about that. And I, and the porta-pots, I think they're just critical. We're talking about the health of the river. And if you've got a lot of people coming into these ramps and boaters, there's got to be some...
Well, this falls, this falls under, doesn't this fall under you? I mean, is that where conservation hits or? I mean, the reason I'm asking is that maybe it's time for, if we have this kind of, is we put a little advisory group or some, a citizens group involved?
Well, we have it. We have the Conservation Lands Advisory Committee. And that's the advisory group to manage these. Actually, management of the conservation lands is really split between community development and public works. The actual staff for management is...
Because parks and recreation.
Right.
That's where you get your manpower.
Exactly, exactly.
And that's the, okay.
But let me tell you, you're exactly right. There are a lot of needs and not that much money. We've actually bought a bunch of structures in the past few years. We've got the Archie Smith Fish House, we've got the Ryle House, we've got the Shadow Brook House. I mean, we've got a lot of big expenditures that were, that we, we knew we didn't have management funds when we went out and bought these properties, but the objective back then was to get the properties.
Get it tied up.
Yeah, and that will, and we've got, we've got a number of different types of management activities we've got to do. We've got to get public access, which means parking lots, accessways, restroom facilities, things like that. We have to actually manage the properties. We've got some that are fire types of systems we have to burn. We've got to get rid of exotics on some. And then we've got the structures that we have to maintain or rehab. So, there are a lot of competing interests for those.
I mean, priority generally means money, but I think that in order to achieve what Dr. Baker's talking about, if there's the advisory committee, which I guess I didn't realize they had. But I mean, we need, that's where the citizen input should be, and maybe it needs to be highlighted or make it as effective as possible, so.
But I think we need a person to organize this. It's not just money, it's organization. And I think that's where the problem is.
Looking for a job?
Yeah.
Be careful what you volunteer for around here.
What's your suggestion for that, Dr. Baker?
I think we need to hire at least one person to oversee this in the county.
Good luck.
And would that be an environmental person or...
Probably.
To achieve it, you're going to have to have someone operationally. And that's the dilemma around here, and that's why I'm thinking...
I think it's worth it. It's an organizational thing.
If you, if you have that, there's a possibility, I mean, Indian River County really is blessed with volunteerism.
That's what I'm, he says he's got the volunteers.
But I think you need that position to be official, and then that person be a coordinator of volunteer process and assess and assign based on need.
A volunteer coordinator would be part of the job.
And that needs, if you're, if you're going to do that, then it needs to be in an objective in the conservation plan as a hope, if nothing else. But I mean, that's, I mean, and that's why I said if he's going to bring it back to us, is maybe you know ought to go down and talk to them about it on the side. See what they've done. I mean, I haven't, we haven't seen it since...
That's what I'm thinking, first of all, and that we could see how we're doing if we look at the management plans and see how far we've progressed on them. I mean, I think that should be a table that we should have in, before us.
Bob, can you, in your mind, you know all the departments, is there a process that you think would work that we could put in the, as an objective?
Well, remember, the comp plan needs to be at a certain level of generality. When you get down to operational characteristics, you don't want to get too detailed in the comp plan. And we have a Conservation Lands Management staff right now in the Parks Department. Beth Powell is the Conservation Lands Manager, and she has one other staff person who works exclusively on management with her. And then she has, she has use of park staff.
I mean, I just, I'm thinking that if they have this public, if they have this conservation committee, I mean, maybe it hasn't been active or active enough, or maybe they need to, someone needs to lead the volunteer group and take hold about what needs to happen. And that makes more sense to me, and that's kind of there now, we're just not doing it.
We're basically talking about the, we've shifted to the conservation area.
This has nothing to do with coastal element, that's what I'm trying to get back.
And the bottom line is, we have some staff that was, since the last plan, that were established in parks. We have a Conservation Lands Management Advisory Committee that meets regularly. Focus has been on resource management. There are some issues of being behind on improvements, largely because we look for funds from grants and other agencies before we proceed. These are the various points. We have management plans for most of these sites. But Dr. Baker's right that we haven't kept up with the hoped-for timeframe for improvements, but we do have those plans nevertheless. We do have policies in those plan, in the conservation element, that talks about evaluating the staffing and the funding, looking for a dedicated funding source. These are already in the plan, but we can revisit that when we get back and looking at the plan with the revisions.
I mean, maybe we don't even need to hire somebody. I mean, if you look at planning, I mean, I imagine you're not as busy today as you were a year ago or two years ago. So, there might be some more time now to look at the lands that we have purchased and put somebody with more effort onto that aspect of it. I mean, there's five or six of you right up here now in the planning department, and I would think that you could think more broadly on these particular areas now. I mean, the planning, I would think planning has slowed up a bit in the county.
Well, development activity generally has, but you see, we've got Liberty Park coming out before the board. We had Bristol Bay and Gator Gribb the other night. But let me just tell you, we're also down for planners. So, I mean, it, we're down activity, but we're down people, too.
At the possibility of being criticized, I'm not trying to cut you all off, but I mean, I, I'm telling, I think that what we've got now is a conversation that's a little bit micromanaging the conservation plan. I understand, Richard, I understand your concern, and believe me, I just don't think we can solve that today. I think you've got to believe, either you believe in the objectives we have written or we need to change, go back and change the objectives and broaden them out. And that's why, since we don't have a conservation element in front of us, I'm not sure we can do that now, but I would suggest that you look at it as best ahead of time. Because when we get the big picture, when the book comes back, we still have, it's coming back again. That's our second swipe. And I mean, I understand exactly what you're talking about. And I think part of it, it may be staffing and budgeting. It also may be the public, the volunteerism, not, maybe we're not focused the way some people should be. I'm not sure, but I think that we could do better, and I think that's what you're talking about. So, hopefully, you'll have a chance to look at this, and if, if we need to talk about it in more detail at the meeting, we do the book.
Well, we were talking about, in the county, we were talking about the need for somebody to tell us about when the hurricanes are coming, that's filling that position.
Right.
And, I mean, you can get on Weather Channel or on some of these other places and probably get the same information that we were getting from that county employee that was telling a certain group of people when the storm was coming.
I think that what you're talking about, though, is management priority.
And that was a fairly high-level position. And I, and I think that we're thinking about, I think this is even more important than that.
Okay.
The hurricanes come and go, but we have these lands, we have seventy million dollars with...
Billy raised, raised the question, and this happens a lot. Conservation and coastal manage, we all tend to overlap. And I, we do have the elements to go through today, and this is a conservation element that you're talking about. So, let's try and deal, just put it back into the conservation aspect. If you take the time to look at it ahead of time, we'll be glad to talk about it later. Jerry?
Yeah, on the Lost Tree Islands, if I'm not mistaken, when that was purchased, in the purchase agreement, there was a management plan and money allocated to manage that property, and that money hasn't been used yet. There was a whole plan set up, the Indian River Shores, Bureau Beach, and so on, was to contribute to managing that, those islands, and I don't believe it's been used yet. So, there is money available for that project anyway.
Right.
In the contract when it was purchased, right?
Actually, that, both Roland and I can address this. The money wasn't actually put up there, but all the parties agreed to contribute to the management. What we've been, what we're doing there and what we try to do in most Conservation Lands is get, get work done through mitigation projects and grants. And Roland can tell you, we've got both going on out there right now.
Well, the money is budgeted. Yeah, there's a line item in Indian River Shore's budget for that Lost Tree Islands. So, I mean, it's budgeted, so it should be used, I would think.
Send them an invoice.
Yeah.
Well, yeah.
Bob mentioned, we have a...
Get down to the invoice and say...
We have a fifty thousand dollar grant from U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service for some restoration. We have some mitigation projects. We have a master restoration plan that's being drafted, and we are looking to this town and city as well, once we get into the management, regular management, that there will be...
So, I mean, there is money available.
Yes. And we also are looking at, we're doing some repairs to the Echo Ironman Park facilities, which are needed. We've already gotten, we're working on that.
If you all would, when you hit the conservation element, again, when it comes back in the book, we would like this section highlighted in bold and to know where we're headed. Okay? Anything else on coastal management?
Yeah.
All right, I think we'll just...
Oh, I'm sorry.
And, yes, Donna?
Um, there was a mention about new plan on adding clustering as a requirement in the future land use map? Yes, yes, it is, this one. Objective one, new policy, use various methods to protect natural systems and wildlife corridors, including TDRs, clustering, land acquisition, conservation easements, and green belts. Now, this refers back to the land use element, so is that going to be covered in the land use element, or is that also going to be covered in the coastal management element? I'm sorry, page sixty-seven, objective, last two objectives and objective...
Roland went over, Roland mentioned it when he went over it. It's, I think, I thought it was the overlap between land uses, just to make them come...
I'm sorry?
Sorry, that's also actually in the conservation element as well, and it is a future land use element. Again, as I mentioned, there are overlapping policies and cross-references, but that is particularly also covered in the conservation element. And this is just kind of to mirror that as part of the coastal element. Does that answer your question?
In other words, we're really going to see the, what directs the LDRs in the land use element?
I think it was when, in the land use element, they were talking about using all of these as tools whenever you have projects that were, like in the Western County or in bigger projects, to try and protect as much of the green space as you could.
Okay, I think that answers my question. Thank you.
As I remember.
You're off of this one, George.
Anybody else? Okay. Unless there are any other additions, and you all duly taking notes, the coastal management element, I think we'll move on to the next element, which is stormwater management. Who's going to handle this? Brian? Roland, don't you forget about that management plan. See you later.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Brian Freeman, Indian River County Senior Planner, and we're going to cover the stormwater management sub-element. And essentially listed there are the components to the evaluation appraisal report process, which we've gone over already with each of the elements. And looking at the existing conditions for stormwater management, there have been numerous drainage improvement projects that have been completed throughout the county, including in Roseland, Gifford, Rock Ridge, and other subdivisions as well. And also, Indian River Lake Estates neighborhood, there's one of, the first phase of a three-phase project has been completed, and the other two phases are underway. And also, regarding Indian River Lagoon water quality, the main relief canal filtration system, which is, you know, just north of this building, was recently completed, and there's been other projects such as the Egrit Marsh, which are, are in the planning, or actually is out to bid with that project. So, that's also underway. And looking at the analysis of stormwater conditions, overall, stormwater management systems have been successful in providing flood protection in the county. And, you know, this is evidenced by, you know, a recent hundred-year storm event that occurred in this area, and it was Tropical Storm Fay. And while there was localized flooding of some streets in the county, there was no major flooding within, in Indian River County as a result of Fay. There is negative impacts on the lagoon water quality that are resulting from the drainage systems that function within the county. And there's some water quality issues that still need to be addressed. While there has been some improvement regarding water quality, there's further improvement needed. And these both relate to improving the quality of stormwater runoff that flows into the lagoon, and also reducing the quantity overall of stormwater runoff that flows into the Looking at the objectives and policies for the stormwater management sub-element, overall, there's eight objectives. Four of these were achieved and four were partially achieved. And there are forty-eight policies. Of these forty-two were implemented, five have not been implemented, and one was partially implemented. And this table shows the eight objectives that are in the element. And as you can see, the first four were partially achieved, the second four were achieved. And two of these are specifically required by state statutes, and those are highlighted on the table. And what I'm going to do is go over Objective Seven to discuss that one in more detail. Looking at the policies overall and all the objectives, there are forty-eight existing policies. Thirty-seven are recommended be maintained and structured. Eleven are proposed for revision. None of the forty-eight policies are recommended for deletion. There's two new policies that are recommended, and we'll discuss those in just a minute. Looking at Objective Seven that relates to stormwater quality, essentially the objective states that the county will adopt water quality level of service standards that would be based on what are called PLRGs, or pollutant load reduction goals, that at the time in nineteen ninety-eight were being developed by the St. John's River Water Management District. And since nineteen ninety-eight, St. John's has adopted or established those pollutant load reduction goals, and those have been adopted by the county and implemented into LDR Chapter nine thirty. All new, and all new and redeveloped stormwater management systems are required to comply with St. John's water quality level of service standards. And staff's recommendation regarding Objective Seven is that it be revised, and that is because St. John's is, at this time, developing what are called total maximum daily load standards, or TMDLs. And these indicate the maximum amount of pollutant that is, that can be allowed within the lagoon and still maintain water quality. And the recommendation is that the county adopt these TMDLs once they are established by St. John's for the lagoon. And looking at the policies for objectives, actually, I should say Objective Seven, there are twelve existing policies. Nine are recommended for maintaining, three for revision, and one proposed new policy. And looking at the three that are recommended for revisions, the first two have to do with the TMDLs that were just highlighted. And the third, which is seven point twelve, this policy revision is, is recommended to bring the comp plan into consistency with the current land development regulation requirements that relate to littoral zones, and these are, would be littoral zones that, standards that were adopted last year. And looking at the new policies for Objective Seven, and also a related policy under Objective Six that relates to Number Seven, the first I'll highlight one under Objective Six, and this would be to add a new policy to explore the feasibility of developing stormwater parks in the unincorporated county. And these types of parks would be similar to the one... And these types of parks would be similar to the one that was recently developed within the city of Sebastian. And these parks redirect stormwater runoff away from the lagoon and into a, a pond and wetland system within the park, where the water is treated and then eventually filters into the aquifer, where it recharges the aquifer. And these parks not only improve water quality, but they also provide passive recreation opportunities for residents. And the new policy for Objective Seven is a recommendation to add a new policy to treat stormwater runoff flowing into the lagoon by filtration systems. And these would be similar to the system that was recently developed for the main relief canal. And additional systems could be developed for the north and south relief canals that also outfall into the lagoon. And lastly, is contact information for any questions or comments?
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. This is, comments from us to staff or anybody in the public wish to address this? You must, come on up, come up and give us your name again, Billy. This is a new element.
Billy Wagner, 2225 20th Avenue. I just noticed, Objective Six, you've achieved aquifer recharge protection? How did you achieve that?
You have to look at the, you have to look at the, the county will continue to require onsite retention of water, and the county will retire, reuse stormwater for irrigation of golf courses, et cetera. Within that objective, these are the policies that they have accomplished. In your mind, you're thinking about filling up water. What they're talking about is accomplishing the objectives as listed, six-one and six-two. Precisely those, not in general making-
Not in general?
Not in general, no.
Okay.
Brian, we've got a, on, in Objective Seven, 710, this says, "Adopt a water quality level of service stand, retention of the first inch of rainfall." That is current? Does that match our current rule? Is this the rule that where we're going to revise? This is the one where we're revising the T, the total? No, okay. But, and then, but additionally, it's 50% treatment required for all direct discharge into the Indian River Lagoon. Explain that to me. What, is this the filtration systems, or what?
No, actually, these are St. John's requirements, and the 50% extra, it's an inch and a half that needs to be retained for any of the water that all falls into the lagoon.
Okay, so retention of the first inch, second is an additional 50%, which now makes it an inch and a half-
Right.
-instead of an inch?
Right.
Uh, this had nothing to do, this, I just, this didn't have anything to do with your filter? I mean, I'm glad to hear we're filtering and trying to protect the lagoon with filtration for a change, but I mean, I, this doesn't have, this policy is not part of that.
This isn't part of setting the TMDLs, and it doesn't relate to the pollutant load reduction, but these are ways to actually treat the stormwater before it actually-
I had, I had, I sent Stan a picture of a, in San Diego, they've got big pipes that the stormwater runoff that has filters in them. I don't know if it slowed them up or not, but, you know, how it worked, but it actually had literally filtration in it, so, which I thought was pretty impressive, but-
Yeah, there are a bunch of techniques, baffle boxes-
As long as we're trying to filter, it's fine with me. Anybody, anybody else? Okay.
Well, a quick question, is the main relief canal, is that working yet? That, it's almost finished, correct? See, it's successive items.
I only start into that next one just to see who I can get to pop up, you know? I only run three fakes, and then I'm changing.
I'm Keith McCully with Stormwater Division, and, yes, the canal system is functioning. It's, the contractor's going through his final punch list items, but it's operational and the county's assumed operation of it. And it's taking out solids as small as 1/16 of an inch out of the water before it enters the lagoon.
Good.
Keith, are those solids that it's taking out, are they the main cause of the muck problem in the rivers?
They're a big part of it. It's taking on basically all the plant material that goes out. It's freshwater plants in the canal systems, and when they hit the brackish lagoon water, they die, and it'll create muck deposits. But there's probably a lot of real fine sediment coming off construction sites and stuff. We try to stop that, but it still gets by, and that also contributes. We have some sedimentation traps that we've put in the system upstream of the filtration device, and that'll trap some of that sediment, but there's so much of it under, like Tropical Storm Fay conditions, that it's still going to go out, but it will make a dent in it.
Okay, are you also responsible for the brine, the, the brine marsh? We call it the Spoonville Marsh?
Uh, no, that's the, I'm in the utility department.
Okay, I have a question.
But he is involved with EGRIT, right?
EGRIT Marsh, yeah.
Right, EGRIT Marsh, he is involved with.
Okay, there was, when, it originally came before planning and zoning to approve that project, that, where they gave us the, the land for the marsh. There was some question as to how well that, that really works in getting the brine out and keeping it from the river. I have, do we have any reports on that?
I haven't seen any. The Stormwater Division hasn't really been involved with that project. It's more of, of a deletion kind of a project for the brine reject water from, I think it's the Hobart Road.
All right, then, is that a Roland question, or?
No, actually, it's a utilities question, and that's under construction right now. So we'll, we'll, they'll be doing studies and monitoring it afterwards, but DEP has permitted it, so I think they felt that the design had the potential to, to achieve its objective.
Are other communities using the same type of science that we're using behind this?
I, I- We're the first.
Pardon me?
We're the first.
Okay.
It's an experiment.
All right, that's, that's what I wanted to know.
In progress.
Actually, some, some communities are using deep well injection, I think, for the brine, yeah.
So it's industrial waste versus stormwater?
Right, actually, the brine is considered industrial waste.
Right. And I have my, I, I hope it, it gets studied very well, so that we know before it starts what the quality is, and then afterwards, and we, and I believe Harbor Branch is involved with a grant-
So we're not sorry, Larry.
-to do this. Well, yeah, it could be shut down, I guess. But what bothers me a little bit is, what do we do if it fails? What, what is the backup that the county has?
Do we have any deep well injections systems?
No, no.
I know Ochs's Bay has one on their property, but I didn't know if you all-
Yeah, and, and the City of Fair Beach, I think, is looking at it right now, and it'd be the opportunity for the county to partner with them. And actually, we do have some policies in the, the potable water sub-element to actually move ahead with brine treatment for the South County RO plant. The Spoonville Marsh takes care of just the North County RO right now. And, and the county is kind of forced into doing that because its permit was expiring, and it had to address the brine discharge. And sooner or later, we'll have to do that in the South County RO plant, so there's a policy in the plan to get ahead of the curve and start looking and planning for that now.
I have one other question. May I?
Certainly. How could we, how could I deny you?
I went to a conference a number about three or four years ago, when the, the state talked about TMDLs, the Total Maximum Daily Loads. And I'm surprised to see that St. John's has not yet established any for the Indian River Lagoon. What is the holdup in this, and what's the projection on that?
I may be able to answer part of that anyways. When they started developing the TMDLs, they divided the state into five groups, and the Indian River Lagoon in our area is the last of the five groups to analyze, and there's about a several-year period for each group, and they sort of overlap, but we're in the last phase of the study right now to determine the TMDLs. And I believe they've issued some draft TMDLs for public comment, and they're in the process of finalizing the numbers, so it's close. But the reason it's taken so long is, it was the last of the water bodies-
We were on the end of the line.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Anything? Okay, stormwater management sub-element is done. We'll move on to the natural groundwater aquifer recharge element.
Mr. Chairman, if you could give me just a minute? We had some computer problems this morning, and I just need to-
Thank you.
-get my presentation in order, so it might take me just a minute.
Can we, I'll tell you what, we'll give you five minutes, and I'll run, get a glass of water, some coffee, and we'll, we'll take a five-minute break, real quick, give you a chance to get caught up, Roland.
Thank you.
We'll start up again. Brian, or Roland, you go all loaded for the groundwater?
Yes, sir.
Okay, rock and roll.
Okay, again, this is the natural groundwater aquifer recharge sub-element, AR. Again, it's hard, kind of a sister element is the potable water element. There's a lot of similarities and issues that are shared. Just real briefly, you know, we're essentially looking at the two aquifers, the sufficial aquifer, and then the Florida and aquifer, which separate about a confining bed. From a primary recharge standpoint in the county, although essentially all of the county serves as recharge for groundwater, there's a couple areas in particular of note. There's the Atlantic Coastal Sand Ridge, just west of US-1. There's the Ten Mile Ridge, which is also considered a primary recharge area for the sufficial aquifer along 95. And then when you get in the western part of the county, there's the Talbot Terrace, which is part of the recharge for the deeper Florida and aquifer.
Okay, let's, you know, people confuse that a lot, if you ask me. So the property, the higher ridges along the coast, we're talking about recharging our, what we call surface water. In a hundred feet or down to about 100 feet, would that be right?
That's correct. But when you get out west-
West, and Ag-3, the west of town, west of the lake, then you actually get into some more of the deep aquifer charge, which actually is being used by South Florida, not us.
Correct. And actually, this is just a small part of the bigger recharge for the deeper Florida and aquifer that's outside of the county, but nevertheless, we do have-
Do you know where we recharge for our county, for the deep aquifer? Do you know the recharge area? Isn't it north? It used to be up around Disney and Oc Orlando, and then north of-
I think it's just basically north and west of our county and other counties, just the primary.
Okay.
So these three areas I just referenced are some areas of focus in, in conservation. As a matter of fact, since the, over the years, we've acquired over 600 acres of scrub conservation lands on Atlantic Coastal Ridge, which, in addition to habitat conservation, helps to serve the recharge conservation. Recently, in the Ten Mile Ridge, we did work with St. John's to ensure that the, what's called the Sand Lake Track was conserved after some process there. And we have maintained low densities west of Blue Cypress, and we continue to plan to do so. I didn't put it here, but we also had those conservation easements on the Patch of Branch property, about 1,500 acres, that also will help keep the low densities for that recharge area. There's a couple of points over the past, since the last update, major update. This again was already covered somewhat in the potable water, but there's been a substantial per capita consumption increase in water, about 100, over 100%. During the same time, however, there's actually been a drop in agricultural water use, we estimate by about 18%. We expect that that might change as, once there's adaptive, who knows, bio, biofuel type production, whatever crop might, that might go up again. We also looked just some, basically, at some regional statistics within the St. John's We also looked, just some, basically, at some regional statistics within the St. John's jurisdiction. From 1995 to present, there's been a 20% increase in water consumption from groundwater. And St. John's estimates that it could be an additional 100 million gallons per day used regionally by 2025. So the bottom line is, there's increased use projected into the future. As we'll get into in some of these other objectives, we're currently meeting demand, but there's, again, concern that once we get to 2025 and beyond that, that we start getting into some issues. This element just had five objectives, four were achieved, one not achieved, which we'll go over. There were 28 policies, 25 of those implemented, three not implemented. Here's a basic summary of the five objectives. What I'd like to do is just briefly go over the, the quantity objectives. As far as the superficial or shallow aquifer quantity, again, we have an objective through 2020 to be no reduction in availability of groundwater for, for use. And again, relying on St. John's' information, and currently demands are being met for the superficial aquifer, there are concerns, and we've referenced this in the other element discussion, that St. John's is preparing a regional groundwater model, where there are anticipated concerns as development continues in Felsmere, River Beach areas. As far as our policies, a couple things I wanted to point out on revisions or new policies under this objective. We've, we had an objective to adopt a water conservation ordinance under the previous plan, however, up to this point, the county's essentially deferred and relied on St. John's' enforcement of water restrictions. Our conclusion at this point is that we need to proceed with our own ordinance to reinforce and to essentially provide local enforcement of restrictions versus relying on the regional enforcement, which will be more effective. So we're proposing that this be retained with a new target date to move forward with water conservation ordinance that essentially reflects St. John's' watering restrictions. We're also looking at revising, we already have a policy in this element related to mining regulations, and have we discussed in the past on other elements, we're looking to revise it to reflect-
Is it monitoring?
Yeah, particularly related to the water-
His hydrological impacts.
Right. We're looking to reflect the water, groundwater monitoring aspects of the workshop consensus recommendations. And then finally, again, this is something we've talked about, but it relates to this element as well as the others, as far as getting a update on the geohydrology study for the county, since it's been 20 years since that was last done. As far as the Florida aquifer quantity, we have an objective of no reduction in availability of water through 2020. And again, this was referenced when we were discussing the potable water element, EAR. Right now, St. John's projects, we have available capacity through at least 2020, and we're looking for that new study. Related to that also, and we're looking, again, to cross-reference what was discussed at the potable water, where we're developing objectives and to reflect the alternative water supply study that's been done, and the objective and policies that are being established under the potable water element, we're proposing to make reference to that in this element as well.
When we factored in, in the, in the policy, the potable water side, we factored in for surface water collection and use of surface water for potable water, wasn't that one of the actions we were going to use, trying to utilize what we had on the surface in these ponds?
Yeah, that's one of the alternative sources of public water supplies being used.
If we do that, I mean, the only thought, I was just, I was asked this, I was asked this the other day, if we do that, and we pull that, if we pull down those areas of water, are we going to, in fact, hurt our superficial water supply on recharge, by any chance? Or is that going to have an effect, or do we know yet?
I think there are a couple of sources of surface water we can get. There's the marsh out there, and there's a possibility for additional reservoirs, and then there's also what we talked about, the C-54 canal.
Ah, okay, not necessarily ponds around the county, go to, okay.
Right.
Okay.
And that water's generally going to tide right now, so, yeah.
Going anywhere, yeah, going out anyway.
Roland, there are states involved in the recharge of the Florida, correct?
South Georgia.
Mm-hmm.
Alabama.
South Carolina.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
Are there utilizations and future permitting of wells in those states involved in the St. John's study, which reflects the availability of water for us and through 2025?
I don't know that answer. I mean, we're relying on St. John's to do the study, and I assume that they're, we're the big picture, since the recall in the past-
You can ask your new St. John's board member, Mr. Bornet, he ought to know that. Okay, Roland, sorry, go ahead.
Now, that's, that's essentially it. Again, we have the, I didn't put it on my presentation, but there's a couple other points while we're talking about it. The county has been a partner with St. John's, for example, on another component on artesian well-plugging for, since the early 90s. We're looking to make that an important program to continue into the future with budget cuts and such. You know, there's a tendency to look at that mine item, to eliminate it, but our position is it's important enough where the county really needs to continue that program. Right now, we, we fund $20,000 a year, which is matched by the St. John's for well-plugging. I think we've, between, over the years, we've plugged close to 400 wells, and it's an important program that we're also promoting to continue here. And that's essentially it.
That it, okay. Any questions of Roland or staff? Anybody in the public care to comment on this? Come on up, Billy. You must have stayed awake a long time reading all three of these, you know, we're proud of you.
They worked on it a long time. Billy Wagner, 2225 20th Avenue. Roland, there's one more map at the very end of your presentation you didn't show. All of the consumptive use permits and pumps in the whole county. Yeah, look at that picture.
Yeah, I put this up-
That's all the straws.
Mm-hmm.
That's all the straws.
This is wells over four inches only, too.
Yeah, right.
It doesn't count the, the two inch ones, which you don't need a permit for.
Right. And is there any depth, was there depth with these?
I don't know which of those are-
I think, I think these are combined shallow and deep wells. I mean, the citrus area, you can, all the wells to the west are mostly aquifer wells, I imagine, but I think inside, I don't think they're, they're probably surface water.
Is citrus still using flow irrigation, or is that all gone?
Well, occasionally it's used, Billy, mostly it's low-volume microjets.
It's much better.
We've got it, you know, we've got to do that, because we can't, the permits don't allow any more water than that.
Right, because in Polk County, the water levels have come up so high since they started that, it's made all, go back to the 1960s water levels in the lakes over there, like when I was a kid.
You wanted to go back in time earlier, is this, have we improved here? Okay.
Oh, that was big. But you see all those wells on that Atlantic Ridge, and every time they plunk down one of those golf courses, like red stick, and all those barrier island people coming over to golf on the ridge, they get them, what do they get, 12-inch wells? They get 12-inch consumptive wells out of the water management district.
I don't think so, I don't.
That's what I heard.
They have to use, most of them have, a lot of them have reused water now, Billy. They don't, they're not-
Oh, but we never have enough to supply them.
I think they're close now. They're, they're close. According to our last report, they were, yeah.
Okay.
I think, I think there's a big improvement over that. And then the BMPs on golf courses have improved quite a bit. There's, there's a lot of water on them, because I've lost a lot of golf balls, so I mean, if they were drying up, I could find my golf ball.
Yeah, don't go in those, don't go in those water holes with the gators. Right, so the map, the maps are much better than the original one I got, which is just-
They're much better on line, and they are printed out, that's true.
Well, I mean, the map, the maps are just better all the way around now, so we can ignore the maps that I got. What, what, what is going to happen on 23, 23-1 in the packet, which is the Saprod Surface Aquifer Primary Recharge Overlay District? It shows the existing and past mining operations, and I see all those mines on the Atlantic Coastal Ridge, and nowhere in this element do I see address the fact that when they go in there for their fill dirt, and they dig down to the water table, that this does not draw down the water table. And I think it does, which causes saltwater intrusion. And for example, the Lost Tree Preserve, on their site plan, the first thing they were going to do is big, dig huge lakes down to the water table, and the water table was going to maintain the lakes, and they were going to use the sand for, you know, basically carving their development into the ridge.
Billy, right now, we've had, if you've been listening to the moratorium on sand mining, we had a whole workshop on hydrology, and we had, we had several experts. One pro probably would agree with you, we had some mining people that would disagree. One of the things, recommendations in our, which will come up before the county commission October the 6th, as we have, is that you, we monitor, put in monitoring wells around the project that's putting in a mine for, through a wet period and a dry period, so it's almost a year, so we can see the effect, if any, on the water table. There's conflicting data about whether that actually affects the water table or not. There's no question that initially the drawdown to get to the sand drops the water table within a certain distance of the mine, they call it the cone, but as soon as they stop mining, the water table does fill back in, and yet now you have a lake and the water table comes back up. Now, whether or not it's at the same level, I'm not sure we really know, but that's the, the conflicting side of this, but we're going to try and start monitoring prior to doing it, so we have a better idea on distances, et cetera, so.
Because I might-
We appreciate your opinion, but right now, we're dealing with a lot of opinion and not a whole lot of fact-
And what does that mean? Does that mean they'll keep allowing developments with lakes on the ridge?
I think it does, yes. Because there's no proof, or there's no, right now, there does not appear to be any real proof that it affects the water table, or changes the water table that dramatically over a longer period of time, maybe initially, but not a long time.
Because my friend lives in Winter Beach, and her well goes dry, you know, she's into the superficial aquifer, it's dry, and then when there's water in it, it's contaminated. But all the developments, the new developments around her get county water, they get county water, she got bypassed.
Contaminated with what? Contaminated with what?
Um, she's had, she takes it to the health department often, and every time, I don't know what it, what's in it, but she takes it, like, monthly to the health department, and it's bad.
Is it saltwater intrusion, which is one of the things?
No, it's chemicals.
Oh.
But, um, but all the developments around here got county water, they just bypassed the people that have lived there for 50 years. So there's no, there, so even if the monitoring wells determine that the water table is dropping, and we probably have an idea what the water table was 20 years ago.
If you looked, if you looked at the last element, there's two, two parts that have been added, one in, and I'm not sure, there was in the water element as well as in this element, where we're doing a, a complete, we're recommending a complete hydrological study of the county. Again, the last one was 1989?
Oh, right.
88. Doing seismic as well as hydrological studies, and that'll answer your question.
And then we'll, whatever way it goes?
If it, if they turn out to be areas that, that will harm the aquifer, then those will be areas where mining would not be allowed. The general feeling I've heard is there's probably not many areas like that in the county, but the reality is, we don't know, so we've asked for a study.
Well, this-
A serious scientific study.
But it's, and then it sounds like this alternative water supply, that very last, the last page, Objective 3, does that mean, um, desalination plants, which means you can abandon the aquifers and you don't have to protect them anymore?
Actually, that was looked at, but not one of the recommendations. I think that was like third on the list, wasn't it?
Correct.
There's, there's several items on it, if you go to the alternative plans, they've got two or three items.
Because it's, it's cheaper to preserve our groundwater than to build a desalination plant.
Correct. They're doing desalinization in Tampa, it's the first big project right now, and they're finding out how expensive it is.
Well, yeah, because Dubai does it, but they have lots of money.
It's, it's very expensive on a per gallon basis.
Yeah, so I think conservation and preservation of our aquifers should be the highest priority. Because Palm Beach County has, their water comes from the surface, actually, from a lake, and they're always talking about, well, we'll just go to, go to wells, and then they could let that, they don't have to worry about the water, it's hard to maintain water quality in a lake. They're the last, I think, the last county in South Florida that still gets their water from a lake. Again, it says, under superficial aquifer, which would be page 24, protecting the quantity and quality of groundwater in the superficial aquifer, I would say, and the Florida aquifer, is important for the immediate future growth of the county. I think they should amend that to say, to maintain the water supply for current county residents. I'm not worried about the future growth, just the people that live here now may not have enough water. We should always be worried about the people that live here now, not accommodating people who don't even live here yet. Because we can't count on the Water Management District to do that, their mandate is to provide water at all costs.
First come, first served.
That's right.
Not all costs, but first come, first served.
First come, first served, okay. Um, it says, water quantity, the Atlantic Coastal Sand Ridge and the Ten Mile Ridge are being altered as sand from the ridges is excavated for use as construction fill. This has a potential to reduce the recharge area and eventually reduce the overall quantity and yield of the superficial aquifer. We should continue to target, page 24, we should target the acquisition of environmentally important lands within prime recharge areas.
We don't have that page.
See, it's, it's the one, it's Indian River County, page 24.
I think she might be referring to the actual element-
The actual element.
Which we don't have with us.
Oh.
Not the EAR, but the actual complaint.
But I mean, Roland knows that, anyway. But that's the thing. We do have to protect the recharge areas, and every time they come up, consider a development right on top of the recharge area, especially one where they're going to dig a big hole in the ground, you should just, they should stop and look at that a little more carefully, because you're doing one thing, and then you're doing another thing, and they're completely across purposes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Billy. Anybody else in the audience care to speak to this element? Okay, any other commissioners, any comments or thoughts?
She brought up the issue of the cups, and we were going to go, well, there's 1,900, is that what she listed on this map?
The what? I'm sorry.
19 consumptive use-
Consumptive use permits?
That's-
Yeah, I'm going to say, this is from information we got from St. John's, this is 2004 information, about 1,984 consumptive use permits.
So how are we doing overall? Is this going up, going down? Where do we stand in that?
The problem with looking at these statistics is these wells are, you know, they're permitted for a certain maximum withdrawal, and whether or not they're, they're doing their maximum or using them or what, we really don't have a good handle on that. We do have some basic water use information that's in the EAR, as far as-
Agricultural, I'm sure they've dropped. I mean, I'm, I'm, nobody's using full use out there now. I mean, I'm, nobody's using full use out there now, that I know of.
And far as St. John's, there's about 10 percent of the water consumption in the county's from the superficial aquifer.
I've got 12 on our front.
This, this is deep wells, right?
This is a combination of deep and, I believe it also includes some-
Because see, that's what I was looking, I don't think, I think toward the populated area, near the urban service line where the housing, I think those are shallow wells. I don't think, I think there are very few really deep artesian wells much east of 95.
Where there's large concentration.
There are some in the old groves, west of the urban service area, probably, and east of 95, there would be scattered deep wells, but, but, and that, because I know when the county was putting in their new north county field, there are groves up there in the areas, Graves Brothers and the Old Rile property, they were concerned about their wells. But mostly the deep wells are west of town.
My understanding is there's something like 5,000 wells out there in this county. Is that, cutting the two inches and things like that? Is that true?
I think if, in the report, we do reference the health department's numbers, they have about 33,000 wells, if you include private wells, beyond just-
Right, and so then that's addition, so you add these 2,000, you're getting up there to the five.
Right, I mean, I don't, I-
And that's, that's a lot of wells.
If you look on page five of the EAR, under wells, there is a reference-
The control factor, saying, at least, I don't, I'm not sure about internally and development property, but I assume it works the same way it does in agriculture. A lot, most of the time in an agricultural project, because of the, let's say you've got a square mile of grove, you are told, you, you may have the permits in hand for six to 12 wells, it's up to you how many you put in, but in the end, the consumptive use, the gallons, add up to a number for the whole piece of property regardless of number of wells you have. You've got to put meters on it, and we have to watch the flow, so numbers of wells don't necessarily change your consumptive, your gallons of use because of, you have to go look at the big picture on what is permitted as such. I mean, I think initially, for instance, in one of our groves in St. Lucie County, we had 30 wells permitted, we put in 10, and that was, you know, we don't use half of our consumptive use even with 10, so I mean, it's a lot of wells, but I think there's more wells than there are actual usages anymore.
So that, the recapping program then should be, there should be more emphasis in, in capping some of these wells than?
They're used because of the distances apart, you have, with irrigation-
Quite a few even on the Barrier Island out there, I mean, there's-
Right, now, there are, there is, there has been a concern about that.
Not much citrus out there anymore.
Right.
And we do require any unplugged flow wells to be plugged in conjunction with development projects.
Correct.
And with my- You know, St. John's, we actually bought some of these wells on some of our conservation lands, and because of that, we have to, St. John's requires us to either renew the consumptive use permit or abandon it, and they, they monitor this on a permit basis, so I'm assuming that, and some of these that are showing up here have actually been capped, and this, this includes that as well, based on the database I was looking at.
I have, I don't know how many you would consider inactive wells there are out there. I know that Bob Adair, I mentioned that, and he and Lex Crumhout have thought there are quite a few, but I'm not, I don't ride around seeing wells flowing all the time anymore, so I don't know what's out there.
Coming to St. John's, they've, since we've been doing this program since the early 1990s, their general viewpoint is, most of the more obvious flow wells have been, are being addressed, they're getting down to the less obvious ones. And now that we have this database here that you see in the overhead, we're also, through our land development regulations, require that these be identified and addressed on a development-by-development basis, so we are trying to handle it at least incrementally as development occurs.
It'd be nice to know to separate them out between the superficial aquifer and the shower then.
The deep.
And, and have that information in there, I don't know, you get it from the health But Billy brought up a good question, up in Sebastian, I know a lot of the wells, the shallow wells, are drying up.
Well, they grow to dry, yeah.
When you had the drought there, they were-
I mean, I know the one at my house on the beach, I had lost it on, on the house for a while, so, it just, it happens. Okay, anything else on aquifer, or natural groundwater and aquifer recharge? Okay. Thank you all very much. Bob, anything else today? Billy, thank you for coming, we appreciate it.
No, I'll remind you again, we're going to be sending out a packet Friday, it'll include the entire EAR, it is going to be a thick document, it's probably three inches thick, double-sided, so it's a substantial document, but-
And we will address the comp plan, management of our comprehensive, our conservation properties, okay?
We will, that'll be in, like you said, we're going to have several tables indicating comments or bucket list items or DCA requirements, how we're addressing them. But the good news is, we haven't got any other public hearings scheduled for the next P&amp;Z meeting, it looks like we might not even have any development projects. We got two, but I don't think they'll be controversial, so we'll be able to devote full-time to the EAR on the 9th, and that's it for me.
Okay, thank you. Anything down at the legal end, George, are you awake? I mean-
Doing just fine, and no presentations.
Thank you. All right, we stand adjourned.